All right, and this time I'd like to call upon Commissioner Oribay to lead us in an invocation, please.
Mayor, as I got home today, I wasn't aware of kind of all the events that had been going on all day. So, you know, I kind of took it pretty harsh, you know, it's a sad day, hard day. So I invited my pastor to come because I really didn't think I had the right words that I liked to express. So I invited Pastor Windorf and I wanted to ask him to lead us in prayer.
Thank you.
Let us pray. Lord, our world is overtaken by unexpected calamity and by a host of attending fears, worries, and insecurities. We witness suffering and confusion and hardship multiplied around us, and we find ourselves swept up in these same anxieties and troubles, dismayed by so many uncertainties. Now we turn to you, oh God, in this season of our common distress. Be merciful, O Christ, to those who suffer, to those who worry, to those who grieve, to those who are threatened or harmed in any way by this upheaval. Let your holy compassion be active throughout the world even now, tendering the afflicted, comforting the brokenhearted, and bringing hope to many who are hopeless. Use even these hardships to move our hearts nearer to you. Indeed, oh Father, may these days of disquiet become a catalyst for conviction and repentance, for the tendering of afflictions, for the stirring of our sympathies, and for the refining of your love. We are your people, and we need not be troubled or alarmed. Indeed, oh Lord, let us now love more fearlessly, remembering that you created us and appointed us to live in these very places in the midst of these unsettled times. It is no surprise to you that we are here now, sharing in this turmoil along with the rest of society, where you have called your children to live assault and light among the nations, praying and laboring for the flourishing of the communities where we dwell, acting as agents of your forgiveness, salvation, healing, reconciliation, and hope in the midst of a very often troubled world. In times of distress, let us respond not as those who would instinctively entrench for our own self-preservation, but rather as those who, in imitation of their lord, would move in humble obedience toward the needs and hurts of their neighborhoods and communities. You are not ashamed to share in our sufferings, Jesus. Let us now be willing to share in yours, serving as your visible witness in this broken will. May we be greatly encouraged, for the lord's throne in heaven is yet occupied, his re- rule is eternal, and his good purposes on earth will be forever accomplished. So we need never be swayed by brief and passing panics of this age. You are the king of the ages, O Christ, and history is held in your father's hands. But we, your people, know the good and glorious end of this story. Our heavenly hope is secure. So save us now from violence, discord, and confusion, from pride and arrogance, and from every course of evil action. Make us a united people, defend our liberties, and give those whom we have entrusted with the authority of government the spirit of wisdom, that there may be justice and peace in our land. Or God of hosts, stretch forth your almighty arm to strengthen and protect the women and men who served in the armed forces of our country and all the vocations that serve to daily protect and to help us. Give them courage and loyalty in all things, that they may serve honestly and without reproach. Let us now this council meeting with wisdom and courage as they normally carry out the work for our great city of Harlingen. And let us rest afresh in a sure, surpassing peace of that vision, that your whole church on earth might be liberty to love more generously and sacrificially. Now labor in and through us, oh Lord, extending and multiplying the many expressions of your mercy. In the name of Jesus, we ask you, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Commissioner. And now if you will all join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now I'd like to welcome everybody to our meeting and wish you all a happy new year. I hope that our things get better for us all. And I would like to remind all of us that we are still in the midst of a pandemic. And while the good news is vaccines have started to arrive, they're still in limited quantities, and they are being distributed first to healthcare workers and then to those over sixty-five or to those who have certain medical conditions. We're all going to have to be patient to receive the vaccine. In the meantime, we have to continue to remind the public and to ask your help to help our healthcare workers who are being overloaded right now in our hospitals statewide and locally in Cameron County with new hospitalizations, increased hospitalizations, fourfold over the last two months. It's four times the number of hospitalizations now that we had two months ago. So we have to ask everybody to please continue to use our, those practices that we've been asking and you have been doing over the last nearly a year now, to wear your mask, to watch your distance, to wash your hands, and to avoid large gatherings. So please help our healthcare workers, help our community, continue to battle the COVID-19 pandemic. With that, I'd like to call this meeting to order, which has been duly posted for our regular meeting. And go to item one, which is the, which is the recognition to the city of Harlingen Bible Statistics Department, recipient of the 2020 Exemplary Five-Star Service Award.
Josh, you want to go ahead and present, Diana?
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioner. We have Diana and Crystal, members of our Bible Statistics staff, who, under considerable challenges we faced during 2020, they still were able to secure this award another year. For the many years this, this staff has been able to accomplish this, especially during this specific year, which was extremely challenging for all of us.
So we're really, Diana and all of your staff were very proud of you and this, and your department for, for doing what you've done again to be recognized as an exemplary Bible Statistics Department. I don't think people really realize how, maybe how important and vital, vital statistics is until this pandemic. And, and the work that you have done has specifically contributed to the information and the knowledge that we, that we needed to have as we fought through the pandemic. So congratulations to each and every one of you. Thank you for your leadership, and thank you for the work that you've done for our community.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Diana, would you like to say anything or?
Thank you for your kind words. We, we have been participating with Cameron County with the direction of our director. We have been assisting with the COVID counts pretty much on a daily basis. We've been, it's been overwhelming, but we love our job. We love what we do. And, you know, keeping accurate numbers is the most important thing. Keeping communication with our director, with the county, our city manager, it's extremely important.
Well, you guys are heroes too, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item two is the approval of the minutes of the special meeting, September fifteenth, twenty twenty, and the special meeting of December eighth, twenty twenty. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Mayor, do we need to do citizen communication?
Yes, we do, and I'll go back to that, but let's go ahead and take up the minutes.
Okay.
A motion for an approval, Mayor. Second.
All those in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Those opposed, minutes are approved as presented. Go back to citizen communication and input. I believe we have one individual signed up for, for something that's not on the agenda. And then Amanda?
Yes, yes, Mayor, and it's Mr. Ron Lozano at twenty-four ten Riverside Drive. And he would like to speak on topics item three, eight, seven, and a non-agenda topic. We'll go ahead and call him up right now, Mayor.
Hello.
Hello, Ron. This is Amanda Ron. You submitted a citizen's communication form to speak on item three, eight, seven, and a non-agenda item. You have two minutes.
We're gonna, well, let you, Mr. Lozano, we're gonna let you speak on the, on your non-agenda item first, and then we'll call you back on the other two items. So please begin now on your non-agenda item. What is the topic?
You have to.
Thanks. It has to do with the current boom in golf. And it'd be who is this city to try and capture more of the market? One route would be to offer range balls to any golfer who obtained a three-month pass or greater. There was also six-month and an annual. Right now, this three-month aforementioned pass is not applicable, but our longtime winter Texans, our winter Texan benefactors, and I emphasize that term benefactors, would certainly be appreciative. One last comment on that. Any large enterprise has some hiccups, but for the most part, they're immediately addressed. There's a, the golf course is a pleasant feature of Harlingen right now. And I'll conclude that on the non-agenda. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, I, you know, I was gonna say that, would you like to speak on the other two items now, or do you want us to call you back?
Well, well, the thing is, the next item is, I will, but, but I certainly appreciate it. And again, I, I've mentioned constantly that for new losses, I can speak at the item. So I'll forego speaking on seven, but I'll make a quick quip on three, eight, which is that to call any monetary budget of the city closed is palpably laughable. Last year, at a public hearing, the stated date for conclusion of the budgetary process occurred early, and a favorite constituent on the very day when the budget was supposed to conclude wanted to amend it. And that, that's my context here, that it's hard for y'all to adhere to the budget. And I'll, and I'll wait later for number seven. Thank you. Bye.
All right, thank you. So then we'll go to, we'll just go ahead and go to the consent agenda, items three A and three B. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move, Mayor.
A second.
Motion, the second. All those in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item four, is the consideration of possible action to enter into a child care local match contribution agreement with Workforce Solutions Cameron Local Workforce Development Board? Gabe?
Mayor, members of the commission, Luna Lopez, Director of Childcare Programs for Workforce Solutions Cameron, has asked the city to identify any funding that we would use for programs to promote children's and teens' learning. We identified four hundred and sixty-five thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars that would be spent this budget year in Harlingen Public Library. So what she's asking us to do is fill out a pledge form that says we will spend that money on those programs. And they in turn will be able to make almost a two-to-one draw from the state to assist the county in similar programs within, within the county for, for, for these types of activities. So this is not a pledge to provide funding for Cameron County, but merely a pledge of we will spend those monies within the library. And what they're trying to do is reach a goal of about a little over one million dollars to be able to draw down just a little over two million dollars from the state. So staff is recommending approval of the, of the item.
Gabe, are any of those funds that they get gonna come back to the city in any form?
Some will. It'll be used within Cameron County, so within that group.
No, but, but, but within Harlingen.
She did say there would be some Harlingen residents that would be assisted, but she did not give us a number. But it would be eligible for Harlingen residents, awesome.
Okay, because I imagine the library is like one program, and this other, they do with several other, other services that deal with a certain child, correct? It's not, it's not just one program, correct?
No, and these are, these are also for children's programming. Obviously, it wouldn't be similar to what the library does, because the county does not have one, but it would be programs to assist children and young teens.
Okay.
Is there, is there a motion to approve the Workforce Solutions Agreement?
Remove.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second.
All right, is there any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Raise your hand, please.
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, last sign, and we can carry on. Item five is consideration, is consideration of possible action to appoint a key representative, a service member on the Red Cross Board of Directors. Gabe?
Mayor, members of the commission, Dr. David Luna contacted the city manager and asked him if he would provide a city employee to serve on the Board of Directors for the Red Cross. The city manager is asking the commission to appoint me to serve on that board. It would be for a two-year term and would require a thousand-dollar payment to be made from the city to the Red Cross Board annually. So we're asking for your approval on this, Mayor.
Do we currently have a seat on that board now?
No, sir.
So this is a new position? Isn't, are they extending the, the number of board members or?
That I don't know, but he would like to have city representatives on the board, because they do work with cities during disasters. And so they want to have a city representative on that board. So that's, I believe that's why he's asking for one now. I do feel like this is a great opportunity to sit on the board with the Red Cross. We do count on him a lot during an emergency situation, so I think this is a great opportunity for us.
And I take it that this board is one of those boards that the board members have to be contributing. So that's why we have a thousand-dollar payment for it. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I do, I think, I think it's an excellent idea to improve the, you know, communication between the city and the Red Cross, because we do work so closely together during disasters, so.
I'm making the motion to approve.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second by Commissioner Oribay. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and that's on your free time, right, Gabe? That's not, you don't have to.
How many boys do you serve on?
They, they only meet on weekends. I didn't tell Gabe that, but.
Oh, thank you.
All right, item six, consideration of possible action regarding the participation of the mayor and city commissioners in the 2021 It's Time Texas Community Challenge and sign the Community Challenge pledge form. Javier?
Good evening, Mayor, City Commission. It's that time again of the year, and we're asking to participate in this year's It's Time Texas Community Challenge. The challenge will run January fourth through February twenty-eighth. As most of y'all know, our main goal, of course, is to promote the health and wellness in our community. It's a friendly, fun community challenge. We'd also, of course, like to bring home the first-place trophy for the fourth year. And so if y'all sign your pledges, each one of your pledges worth a hundred points. If you register individually, it's five hundred points. And of course, we host any registered event, it's five thousand points. And then, as we've done every year, we like to do a video with the mayor. And so every time that you post something healthy up on the app, you get points as well, so. I have a feeling that there's gonna be some communities out there trying to knock us off of first place, so we wanna, we wanna bring home the first-place trophy again.
All right.
Here's, here's my form, and it's signed.
Let me see if I could, and let me ask, if y'all could do it individually, I want to take a picture so I can.
Okay, hang on. Is there, is there a mo, is there a motion to?
Remove.
So, second.
To participate in the community challenge.
Second.
A second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All right, now let's participate by signing our, our form or holding it up to the, signing mine.
Commissioner, can you, can you speak, Commissioner Liao, so it'll?
Okay, so this is Victor Liao. There's my form. It's signed one, six, twenty-twenty-one. City Council Member Pledge.
Got it.
City Commissioner Ruben de la Rosa, I just signed and I pledged.
Okay, got it.
Hi, City Commissioner Number Three, Mike Messmore. And I'm holding up mine, and there's my signature and date.
There it is. Do it one more time, Commissioner Messmore.
Certainly. You got it?
No, there, okay. Bring it down a little bit. I can't see it. You need to speak, so you come out on my screen.
Okay, this is Messmore, City Commissioner, and here's my form shaking in the wind.
Got it.
You got it?
Got it.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Oribay, so, Oribay.
Commissioner Oribay, I am the largest commissioner, the biggest commissioner on this panel. And it's my signed, uh, my signed certificate. I promise this year, I promise.
And this is Commissioner Puente, the smallest of the commission. Legend is my signature. Got it.
All right, Mayor Chris Boswell.
Got it.
All right, well, we're off to a good start.
Bring them back so you can scan.
Six hundred points within, within seconds of having begun to accept of the challenge. So let's all get everybody out and walking on our trails and doing, do some healthy eating and, and trying to remain healthy during this difficult time. And I think it's good for all of us to be going out and, and getting, getting some exercise and, and working out and being healthy. So stick with it. Thank you all for participating.
Thank you.
All right, item seven is the consideration of possible action to approve the purchase of a remote service kiosk, canopy, and components from SHI utilizing a buy-board contract.
Donna?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. If you recall, last spring, we received the TSLAC or Texas State Library Border City Grant for a remote service kiosk with the intention of expanding library service to underserved communities. The purchase will, is fully covered by the grant. We don't pay anything out of pocket. It includes a thousand drawer return, item return bin. It returns, it holds three hundred and forty items as security cameras on it. It's climate-controlled. We feel that overall it's the best fit for our community. It has the, the features that we're looking for to be able to meet the goals of the grant, which is, again, to expand library service. Patrons will be able to check out and return items. If they have fines, it does have a credit card machine. It will not accept cash. The, the security system will be approved by our finance department, and, you know, everything that, with the setup will be going through finance before, you know, before we roll out with it. SHI is a buy-board company, and so that's why we're, we're going through them. It's a, like I said, buy-board contract. So it's already been negotiated. Staff recommends approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
So this is ours to keep into the future, right? Because that, that, there is an annual maintenance fee?
Yes, the, the maintenance fee is, if, if it happens to break and to do software updates, after that, if we feel like we're not getting anything out of the, the maintenance fee, then, you know, we can always drop that. But the machine will be ours to keep.
Awesome. I think.
A motion for an approval, sir.
I think we have a public comment on this.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Mayor?
Did I hear him say that he was going to pass on that item?
Well, no, Mayor. I understood that he would like to discuss it. I mean, talk on it when it was being discussed.
Correct, that's what I heard.
Well, let's call it, let's call it then.
Okay.
Mayor? Okay, okay. I'm just waiting. I don't know if they're gonna ask any more questions. Let me just. No, 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 let, let the questions continue.
You mean the discussion of the item?
Yeah, yeah, I'm trying to find out the information, so see if I'm gonna say anything.
Well.
All right, and y'all think, and y'all think I can't hear? Let's, what do you say?
I have no more questions, Mayor. Donna answered all of my questions.
Okay, I think.
I motion for an approval.
I like your motion, Commissioner Oribay's made the motion.
Yes, I make a motion for an approval.
Second.
My Commissioner Liao. Any other discussion?
Oh, now, I'll stop. Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes.
Mayor? Go ahead, Ron. You have two minutes.
All right, thank you very much. I did hear what, I, I didn't, because of the audible stuff, I didn't hear the first few words, but I heard that this is made by a grant. However, even, even in that context, the state has a cap of a thousand dollars for solicitation without giving a bid. And so I would ask one question. Did the city manager or himself or designate someone to require a proper bidding process?
Buy-board is a state-approved process that's been approved by our city commission. And so we're utilizing a state-approved bidding process. The answer is yes.
Well, thanks for the answer. I'll, I'll, we'll check on that later. Thank you very much. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Bye.
All right, is there any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item eight is consideration of possible action to approve the placement of the twenty-four-hour library kiosk in the Long Sea Hill Park. Donna?
Mayor Commissioners, as we're looking for a location for this machine, it was important for us to have a, a certain distance from the library so that, you know, it's not too close. But it's convenient for our, our citizens to be able to pick up items, drop off items. And in looking at the goals of the machine and in looking at the goals of the, the Long Sea Hill Park, which is to become a destination park and very family-focused, we really feel like the two projects marry well together, and that, that the park would be an ideal location, especially next to the accessibility playground. It's, it's viewable from the street, so that PD can drive by and keep an eye on it. It's convenient for families that are taking their children to play at the park. They can take their, their child to play at the park, check out a book to read, return materials from the library there. And we just really feel like the, the two projects would work well together, and it's also close to the Boys and Girls Club.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Raise your hand. Thank you. All those opposed, motion carries. I think that's a great location. We're a great, great supplement to our library services in our community. Congratulations for securing this. It's gonna be a real, really excellent decision. I'm so really happy that it's near, near the Boys and Girls Club, too. All right, so item nine is board of, board appointment, board appointment.
I have none, sir.
None.
None.
Okay, I hear that there are no board appointments. So the next item will be item ten, an executive session, attorney consultation pursuant to section five fifty-one point oh seven-one, Texas Government Code, to seek advice regarding the city's legal duties and obligations in connection with pending litigation filed under Rueven Arpania Senior at Isle versus City of Harlingen, Texas Civil Action one twenty, CB one sixty-three in the United States District Court Southern District, Texas Brown's Division and related matters. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Remove.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
All right, then, those opposed, all right, we're now in executive session. We All right, we're now in executive session. We will have to return to announce that we are out of executive session and to adjourn the meeting. But in the meantime, the commission will go to the other meeting, and then we will return to this meeting. Thank you. So we're just going to, going to announce that we are out of executive session at six thirty-three PM, and there being no further business or agenda items. We are adjourned. Everybody be safe, be healthy, and we'll see you soon.
Happy New Year to everybody.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate you.